And call the April 2nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the March 5th, 2018 minutes. Commissioners, y'all have had those. Any changes that need to be made? If not, I'll accept the motion.
I approve of move approval of the minutes as written.
Second.
I've got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. First item on the agenda, ZC 1804. Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a PUD amendment to the Old Battles Village PUD. The number of lots is 36 on 14.90 acres. You can see in your packet, we included some before and after the current PUD and then the proposed PUD, kind of side by side. There are two areas they're amending. One is the west side and one is the east side. The west side includes a little more change. The east side is really more just some lot line readjustments and those kind of things. Staff did review this. We did look at it from the compatibility standpoint. And as your staff report points out, they are increasing it from 20 lots to 36 lots over 14 acres. It's a change of 1.63 units per acre to 2.42. We feel like that is compatible. The R2, typical R2 density we have in the city, that would, the 2.42 would be in keeping with the typical R2 density. Also, we did notice and note and point out in your packet, there are several mitigating factors, we believe, when it comes to the lots and how they're laid out and designed. One being to the north, as you can see from the screen, there is a large common area that includes quite large oaks and some little small creek or wetland going through there that separates the west side PUD amendment from the northern properties. Creates a good buffer. And then also, on the south side, there are several little strips of property about 15 and 20 feet wide that are, I believe, held in common that sort of separates the differing lot widths. And lot widths are about 85, 80 to 85 feet below, and then the PUD is about 60 to 65 feet in lot width, if you look at that. So we feel like there has been some measures that have been included that help mitigate any sort of incompatibility from the lot sizes and also the orientation of the lots. So we do believe this is, it is compatible. If you can see in your recommendation, there is one issue that we looked at. I don't think it's germane to this particular application right now, and that is the wetland area. They are proposing to, there's an isolated wetland, it's not a jurisdiction, but an isolated wetland. The city of Fairhope has an independent standalone wetland ordinance that says anytime you, there's a buffer requirement and those kind of things, and anytime you change that, that wetland ordinance has a particular process you go through. At this point in time, we don't feel like it's germane, but at the time of preliminary plat, that will be. And so part of our condition of approval is, is that that improvement to that wetland be done in accordance with that standalone wetland ordinance prior to or during the preliminary platting process. And the ordinance does lay out some measures you can do to improve those. So that's our one condition, is that we do recommend that that be conditioned on this PUD, that at the time of preliminary plat, that wetland is handled correctly. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Wayne. At this time, I'll call up, is anybody here on behalf of Preble Rish, or should I say Dewberry Preble Rish to?
Thank you.
As of today, we're officially Dewberry only, so no Preble Rish anymore.
Dewberry, yeah. Are you Mr. Dewberry?
No.
And I am not.
No, he's not.
You remembered, right?
I know you now.
Okay. Of course, this is the second time you've seen this. We did this, you know, just recently on Firethorn. You're gonna probably see more of it. I know we're not the only ones that have a client that's looking at this type of thing. Our client is just, again, as we did on Firethorn, we did a small pocket, if you remember, in that development. And again, we're looking at that in this development, just a small portion of the site. And in regards to the wetland area that Wayne mentioned, originally in the PUD, we avoided that altogether. But in this, at this point, we've decided we would like to go ahead and approach the city and go through the process of mitigating that and moving that pond over. We'll basically be replacing it with an existing pond that will serve as a detention pond, but it would be a bio-detention pond. So we'd like to go through that process. But to get to that point, we really would like to know, first off, if you folks are in agreement to making the PUD modification. Then obviously, at that point, if you're good with that, then our next step would then come back with a preliminary plat submittal. We'll go through the process with the city relative to the mitigation of that non-jurisdictional wetlands and hopefully be able to prove to city staff and you folks that that's a good move. But before we start spending time and money going through that, we need to find out if the PUD modification is agreeable to everybody. We, again, they intend to treat this as a, as much as they can, we've created these spaces that Wayne's talked about. We would also create at the entryways, some special column areas that'll kind of separate this, to kind of make it look like it's a different element within, in it. So because obviously, the homes are gonna be somewhat smaller, but Truland Homes is doing them, and it's not just the idea of being a smaller home, that it's a cheaper home. It'll be, Truland be doing the design and building, and they do very good quality stuff. This is just a new product offering, if you will, a lifestyle type arrangement for folks where they fit into a neighborhood, basically, they're gonna market it to a 55-plus age group and give them somewhat of a community within a community. They will be able to continue, these folks will be able to use the amenity area. In fact, it's not hardly a block away from where they are. That amenity area, if you remember, was moved to be done in Phase 2, and that is now in completion stage. So it's a good location for this. It's, like I said, it's close to the amenity area, which is good for this particular group that we're marketing to. So hopefully, you agree with that. The rest of the PUD, let me just make sure we all, the balance of the PUD has not changed. Nothing has changed. The narrative that we had in place for that, for those portions of property remains the same. No change in the boundary of the development. It's just a small section. And in fact, it's just the sections to the west. The east side, I think the change there was just numbering, lot numbers, sequence of, but layout's the same. If you have questions for me, I'll be glad to answer those, or I'll be glad to come back up if there are any questions for the public.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one quick comment? As far as the wetland goes, any sort of compensatory water storage that has will have to be accounted for, so there'll be no net loss from that standpoint. We'll ensure that. As you know, an isolated wetland does can carry water. We'll make sure that is taken care of and that compensatory storage is made up and not lost. So just want to make that clear.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. I've got three people listed, and after these three people come up, I'll see if anybody else wants to speak. If there's any questions that you have, I'll go ahead and write the questions down, and we'll get either the city staff or the developer, whoever's appropriate, to come up and answer those questions. The first person listed is Jerry Brandt. Yes, sir. And if you don't mind, even though I said your name, if you'll say your name and your address, so Emily can put you in our record for the minutes, would be fantastic.
You want the physical address?
Just wherever you live, just for you.
Okadok. Hi, I'm Jerry Brandt. I'm a resident, Lot 134, which, it doesn't have a border actually up there. It's where that air runs through, right up against the new houses coming in. So I thank the council, everyone in the public attendance, for the opportunity to speak a little bit on this. It's kind of a great concern. I just moved in in December and bought a very nice house. Came in, came up with some wetlands behind me and a nice common area. The border that's spoken of is a good 330 yards, a good drive for some of you folks, I'm sure, and a golf ball away. There's no border behind my house. I border directly on the common area. My neighbor actually has the lots being built straight by their house. I did note in an email, if you had a chance to read it previously on that, this is a, you know, 70, 71% increase in density along with the loss of the wetlands on that, which we watch red hawks. My neighbor said he's seen a couple eagles in there. There's a lot of things that are used for that in the local wildlife. That's a 30% loss in wetland area, and even though you could make the pond, you know, 200 feet deep, you're losing the border areas, which were originally shown on the plot. We bought the house, good faith, planned development, it's gonna be up, expecting the lot sizes, everything to be consistent, which the 300 lots they are. As a matter of fact, if you went down another 400 yards past this border, there is a nice spot with an equivalent acres that they could put the entire self-contained area, would be isolated well away from the current residents that are existing within the planned development on that. We bought in good faith, hoping that we would continue to have this. I hate to have to come up, I do not like things, POAs, HOAs, city politics, I would just as soon say, hey, that's great. The city did a great job, I think, in planning, approving this in the past. I would like to see that maintained as it goes forward on there. If you'll give me a second, let me look at my notes. I've seen a lot of things, talking about sewage, increased problems with that. That's been a hot topic around here, nine-month moratorium on building and such on that. A lot of people have looked at this, I haven't found anybody eager on it. The community is probably pretty much a 55-plus development right now, the folks that are in there. I do not see any advantage in this, only disadvantages in this. Especially from my perspective, when I look out my back door on this, I'm gonna find out that what I suspected to be a nice common area to be continued and through perpetual until, you know, I pass away in a few years, which I will have this opportunity, but that's okay, we're all facing it. Any which, I strongly, and I'm glad my wife isn't here, she'd be jumping up and down right now. She really opposes it. Unfortunately, she had to be away at a hospital, so. I do thank you for your time on it. If you have any questions or comments on what I'm doing on this, I just don't see any consistency in maintaining this for the development on that. I am a registered professional engineer, by the way, in the state of Florida, having applied for reciprocity, I don't even know if we still do that in the states on this. I do understand engineering a little bit coming along with this, so. Questions, comments on what I said? I believe these to be facts.
Have you had any chance to meet with the developers to express your concern?
No, sir, have not. This is the first we heard of it, you know. All we've heard, I don't know if my neighbor's here or not next door, he didn't receive a letter, by the way, nor did the other one. They just closed on their house, so they did not have, and they were within 300 feet, I'm pretty sure, of the, this planned development. I gave them copies personally, so they're aware of it. Shannon, you here?
I'm here.
Very good. But no, I have not. All we heard, you know, it was gonna be trees and grass, and I realize those are just words. This, however, is written, published, and approved documents for the layouts on that.
Thank you very much.
All right. Appreciate it.
The next person on the list is Gary Baker.
Howdy. I'm Gary Baker, Lot 128. I'm about six lots away from this. Just, I'm a retired home builder from the state of Texas. When we bought our lot here, I already considered these lots to be small anyway, as comparison to what I came back from, from Texas. But now they're wanting to pack in 70% more homes in this small area, and you're gonna go from one area where we've already got lots that are just barely big enough for the houses, and all of a sudden, they're gonna start building smaller houses in there. And I realize you made the comment that Truland Home does a quality product. We'll leave that one on the table right now, because I've just gone through nine months of building with Truland.
I didn't make that comment, the engineer.
Somebody did.
Made the comment, yes.
Truland's got their internal issues right now, and I'm not so sure that by packing in smaller houses in here, that's gonna keep up the value of my home that I just closed on a week and a half ago. That's my big issue. It's gonna be a heavier burden on the waste systems, water systems. This was, this was the plat, the original plat is the one that I looked over before I decided to purchase in there. And now, all of a sudden, I've just closed on my house, and they're wanting to change it. Now, I did hear about this about two or three weeks ago, and I was expecting that they were gonna put it on the far end of the property. That way, people that were opting to buy in there would know it upfront, that if I buy in here, I've got these smaller homes here. Well, they've gone and decided to try to pass this through right in the middle of our subdivision, right next to our homes. And it was really kind of quiet the way it was all brought about. The only reason I know about it is because Jerry lives right, his property backs up to it. Otherwise, I wouldn't have even known this was occurring. So I'm hoping that y'all will look at this in depth before making a quick decision on it, because this impacts the value of my property as well as everyone else around us.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. The last person that I have listed is Carol Wilson.
Carol Wilson, and I live at 489 Bartlett Avenue. And I attended our last HOA meeting in March, just a couple of weeks ago, and we did have a Truland representative who presented to the homeowners that were present that there was an intention to modify or amend the PUD. The owners had become aware of it because of a rezoning sign that was put at the front of the, our subdivision. So that brought a heads up as to what might be occurring. And of course, it was mentioned at our HOA meeting, and the developer, Truland, responded about this amendment. I'd like to speak to the concern about the, of the increase in traffic. There are some impacts to the neighborhood that are uncertain as to what property values could potentially be affected. Our amenities that have been put in were put in for a smaller subdivision, excuse me, for the existing subdivision, and the developer did say that they would consider further amenities, such as another pool perhaps, or a splash pad, some consideration that, of course, they would present to the homeowners to see if they wanted to take on that, that type of expansion of amenities. I do have a couple of questions, though, as to what the square footage of the homes, what they would have gone from in the original PUD to this proposed change. And also, if I understand it correctly, it would go from 20 lots to 36. Is that, is that a correct understanding? And what, what the actual size of the lot would change from and to?
So it's a 14 difference.
22, 22 lots to 36. I'll ask the developer about the square footage.
From 22 to 36. All right, then. And it is just an impression of mine, but I would like to confirm that these are single-family homes and are not duplexed or attached.
They are single-family.
Okay. And do we have an idea about what the square footage of the homes would be, sir? All right, then. And any other further impact that the developer could provide to the HOA, I'm sure would be certainly welcomed. And I think that's all I can think of for now, and thank you for opening this up to the public. And we certainly, I am a fan of Truland Homes. They have treated us very well. We are very happy in our homes, and they have created, I think, what is a very fine subdivision for Fairhope, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. That's everybody I have listed. Would anybody else wish to speak to old Battles Village PUD amendment? Yes, sir?
Yes.
And again, if you'll state your name and your address for our record.
My name is Shannon Taylor. It's, I'm on Lot 135, which is 127 Brandywine Avenue, and I am the aforementioned neighbor that Jerry had mentioned earlier. One of the few under 55 crowd, but glad to be here. We're one of the annoying folks that have relocated from Kansas to Fairhope, so we're glad to be here as well, and enjoying our time so far. Yeah, this came up a bit out of the blue. We purchased our home, the contract to offer was December 23rd of last year. We closed on March 3rd of this year. I believe this notification was sent out on the 12th or 19th, I can't remember expressly. We didn't receive one, but we did get a copy from Jerry. So, yeah, it was a bit of a shock to us. We were told expressly that, you know, obviously, lots 210 through 216 would not be in development or in play, right? There would be no homes that we build on that side of the wetland area. So that would've been a big distinction for us when we went to buy our home. If we knew there would be a future development there, if we knew how many homes would be there, if we knew the size of the homes, the approximate average square footage of those homes, and also what that back area would look like in terms of how far it would extend. Would it be a common fence line? Would it be, you know, maintained by the developer, by the community? Obviously, that fence line extends, would be halfway through my backyard, with an easement that looks like 10 to 15 feet perhaps. But will change a lot of the nature of what that back area looks like. There still was a lot of questions at the time in terms of what that wetland area is gonna look like in the future. We don't really know fully what that does look like, but this obviously changes the face of that quite a bit. So, yeah, we have a lot of questions, and depending on how this goes, it would really impact how long we chose to stay in the home as well. Because obviously, it's not part of the agreement that we made when we purchased the home, nor when we closed on it. And I know that until recently, most folks weren't aware of it, even folks that were actively looking in the neighborhood with the understanding that nothing would be built on that particular side of that road. On the left-hand side, you know, lots 217 down, that was clear, but 216 through 210 were never on the table. So that would be my big concern. What does it look like? What are the plans? The approximate price per square foot would have to be in the range of $134 to $140 to be consistent with the neighborhood. That's gonna be a pretty pricey small home, even if you're mowing the grass and taking the trash out or whatnot. So what kind of consistency would you be able to provide there, and then what would that common area look like? And also, is it really necessary? Are those six homes super necessary right there next to the wetlands? Is there a better place on this property to put this particular development in terms of traffic, in terms of flow, in terms of aesthetics? I think there's a lot of questions there. And there's good, valid questions to raise that the committee needs to look at and think through as they hear from the residents. So I appreciate the time, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? If not, Stephen, if you could come back up. We had one question requesting the approximate square footage of the homes, and this is single-family, that's confirmed, right?
Lee, if I can address one thing. The letters that went out, I mailed 175 letters. We do mail those letters based on the current tax records. I've only received two back that haven't been received, but until your property records are updated through the county, you would not get a letter. That is how state law reads. But 175 letters were mailed out.
Okay. In regards to the home sizes, I can, I can tell you that, and I don't know for sure, and I don't want, I'm not gonna disagree with any neighbor on this, because I didn't, I didn't handle this part of it. I do know that they tried to reach out to the community. They sent, in fact, I have a copy of the letter here that did go out. Maybe it went, again, some of the same problems. If you're newer in the community, maybe they didn't have your address. I don't, I'm not gonna start giving excuses for it, but I do know that they drafted the letter, and I was told they were sending it out to the homeowners association. Folks described what they were proposing to do here, and even went into some detail about the amenity area. There were some concerns about folks wanting to opt out of the, you know, not being part of the HOA and so forth, and they addressed a lot of those concerns. So this was part of it. Maybe not everybody got this, and that's the danger of, when you try to do something like this, is when you send it by mail, not everybody gets a copy. But back to the question related to the home sizes, even in his letter, he states that the homes will be smaller. That's an obvious thing. You're going from lots that are from 80 down to 60. But I did a quick calculation. The amount of buildable area on the lot is roughly 3,400 square feet. You're not gonna build 3,400 square-foot homes. I believe they're gonna move somewhere from the neighborhood of, say, a 2,400 square-foot footprint, possibly down to 1,800 is the, is the size that I've heard them say for these type homes they're doing. So they are smaller homes in footprint, so.
What are the sizes of the houses that are there now?
Some of the folks that are here maybe can answer. I don't know for sure.
Anywhere from 27 to, I think the maximum might be 3,000. I don't know if there's 3,000. It's about 2,400 to 2,700 square feet. It's typical.
Just for those of you who don't know in the audience, this is a PUD. A PUD is actually a zoning, so this would be a zoning change. So as the Planning and Zoning Commission, we actually make a recommendation to the city council to approve this change, or not to approve the change, and then the city council will ultimately make the decision. Stephen, I've got a question for you. I've always been taught that on any zoning, change in zoning, you're not making for the benefit of the developers, the developer's pocketbook, but for what's best for the city. How does filling in a wetland and adding 14 lots in this location help the city out and not just the developer?
Okay. Well, I probably would take issue with the statement about filling in wetlands. These are non-jurisdictional wetlands, and like I said before, we're not just filling them in and doing away with it. We're gonna create behind it this, almost the same square footage of wetland, in fact, probably larger. It'd be a bio-retention type pond. It will, as Wayne said, will not only capture what was there, but it will capture the additional drainage. So we're not getting rid of a detention area. It's being moved over in order to just accommodate the layout that they're proposing, which did increase the number of lots. Overall, just, and I don't remember if Wayne gave the numbers, I think he may have, but, you know, the overall density of this thing only went from like 2.7 to 2.17. So the overall density of the development, even though moving, adding these 13 lots relatively for the overall development is not a huge increase in density. So as far as for the city, the developer's perspective on this is just that it does offer, in their minds, another type, instead of just having cookie-cutter lots throughout, this provides in a PUD for a mixed use. It's unfortunate, in my opinion, in my position, that we don't do this sometimes, after we've already got a PUD approved. I never like coming back to the planning commission asking for a modification. And it's for the very reason I've heard here tonight, in that folks have bought into the development based on what plan that they saw, and now here we are. But I'm charged with coming to you with, this is what they would like to do. It's just a matter of whether you think this is a good thing. I can only say in PUDs, typically, you do see a mixed use in lot sizes, and it's just unfortunate, probably just introducing it at this point. That's the reason.
Steve, how many, how many unit, how many units are in this PUD?
Total?
Nope.
I'm sorry.
Proposed.
Proposed.
The original.
All right. It's a kind of a odd question, because we have a phase that was built, you know, initially it was a 290-lot development.
90?
290. And then you had Phase 1 built before, like, this developer that I represent bought into it. There was 120 lots in that initial phase that was built. So that leaves.
And when was that?
That was approved back in 2006.
Okay.
The developer bought the remaining property and brought to you a modification to the balance of the development, and brought to you a plan for 177 lots.
And when was that?
2000 and...
Just ballpark.
It's like a year ago, we modified.
Yeah. I would say it was around 2016, yeah.
Okay. Okay, and so in terms of phases, this is, this is Phase 4?
That's correct. We have built Phase 2 and Phase 3.
And is 4 the last phase?
Oh, no.
How many?
Six phases total, I believe.
And this is the property that goes north of this piece? The additional phases are north of Phase 4?
That's correct.
Okay, so would, would I assume that if they're looking for a modification, lot sizes, based on, from the originally approved PUD for Phase 4, would I be assuming correctly or erroneously that probably Phase 5 and 6 are gonna come back the same way?
I can tell you, I've worked with this developer, and what we have seen on three different developments is that they've done just exactly this. They've put a small section into their developments and have moved on and not done any more beyond that. I'm not gonna stand here and tell you that they're not coming back. I'll never stick my neck out that far. Developers do a lot of different things, but I can only tell you, from the experience... into their developments and have moved on and not done any more beyond that. I'm not going to stand here and tell you that they're not coming back. I'll never stick my neck out that far. Developers do a lot of different things, but I can only tell you, from the experience I've seen, they've only done these small sections within them just to introduce that.
All right, then here's the next question. Based on the plot for what has already been developed, there are only two ingress and egress spots that serve this whole development?
Eventually, there'll be another, well, there's another one now up to...
Where is it? Where does it go out?
It's north.
Huntington Woods to 98.
Huntington Woods Development to the north. Phase 3 just connected to that part.
It cuts through an older development.
Three has been built all the way through here.
All right.
Four is what they're proposing.
Mm-hmm.
Two exits down there and an exit right here.
Oh, I got you. Okay, I don't see that on here. I got it. Okay, all right. And so the third exit to the north would primarily serve 5 and 6?
Yes.
Okay. I might just suggest one thing based on what I've heard this evening, and it's not for you, but for you to maybe help coordinate it, is get the developer with the people in the, and I know you say they prepared a letter, but it seems to me, were you with the property owners association? Ma'am, yes, you?
I was at the meeting.
Okay, well, maybe they can get property, just because it's not a question that you can ask, I mean, that you can answer, and it's certainly not one that we can answer. And in terms of house sizes or designs, I've never been of the opinion that the planning commission had the ability to control that in any form or fashion. In fact, for the most part, you can't even ask what they're going to build on it. That's strictly up to the developer. So.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Steve a quick question?
Sure.
Seems like most of the concern we've heard tonight is by adjacent property owners who have already bought their home, primarily Lot 135 and 136. Would the developer entertain the idea of eliminating Lot 216 to create a larger buffer between this and their homes, since those two are the most directly impacted?
That's a good point, Wayne.
Yeah, the only way I can answer that, Wayne, is that, you know, obviously, I can't say that for the developer, but I can go back and suggest that to the developer if it was tabled tonight. And at that point, I would think that he would certainly want to sit down with adjacent property owners to say, "If I did this, are you going to be supportive?" And, you know, and that's the only way I know to go with it.
I'm just looking, and that lot, it abuts two lots with existing homes, and I can sympathize with their statements that they bought homes and expecting one thing, and I understand that. I do understand that PEDs do change over time, they evolve, and this one has as well. There's been several amendments to this one over the years, but just a thought. I just throw it out there, Mr. Chairman.
They do, and with that, you know, we've got to look at making a recommendation to the city council of what's best for the city and the citizens, not for the developer himself.
I agree.
You know, you've got that one lot that could be given up, or you've got, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 that could be given up, and if you gave up 7, you'd still be getting seven more lots, and you wouldn't have to move the wetland any. Or you just add in the next phase, you add your high density rather than in this phase. You know, I don't, you know, overall, if this was brand-new, I don't have a real issue with it. But on the other hand, you know, I'm sitting here in the chair wondering, how can I make a recommendation to the city council stating this is what's best for the city of Fairhope, is to, you know, add another 14 lots and, you know, move wetlands and jam a couple lots behind some vaulted houses who didn't have any expectation that they were going to have houses there?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I've heard enough too from public and from you folks, and if you folks would entertain it, I would much rather have this tabled with the ability to go back, give them that option of either meeting with the adjacent property owners to work out some modifications, or let them know what the issues are, and let them decide whether they want to move this entire site to another portion of the site. But I'd like to have at least that option. And if we can't come to terms and they want to drop it, then I can withdraw it, you know, before the next meeting.
I think that's correct.
If you'd like to table it till the next month and then answer these questions.
That would work for me if it's all right with you folks.
No, it's up to you if you've got that right.
Before we get there, I just wanted to address a few of Ms. Wilson's, I know we answered the square footage, but we did not answer the impacts as well as the certain new amenities that you were speaking of. Are these going to increase the HOA fees or what?
We can't talk about the HOA.
That's right.
All I can tell you to that is, those are conversations that have taken place outside of my, I've not heard about it, and I'm sure what would come out of that is they would meet with the HOA to determine whether or not they want to put in another area and incur the expenses.
So that would be a great meeting for the developer and the homeowners association, Ms. Wilson.
Exactly. I don't see how they can move forward on that without talking with them, because they're definitely going to incur expense from that, so.
I think you'd be well-suited during this negotiating period to meet with some of the neighbors and discuss with them what potential you might have for a resolution of some of these issues.
I agree.
Great.
I'll take that back.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and...
Mr. Chairman, can I make one quick comment?
Yes.
You may have recall, about two months ago, we had a site plan approval amendment in front of the planning commission, and in there was a required community meeting. I think this is a case tonight where that would have served very, very well. So some of these comments could be held in advance prior to getting to this point. So that is moving through the process of the city council, so we hope that will be addressed. But this is a case in point where I think that would be very beneficial in a case like this. Just want to make you aware of that.
Mr. Chairman, do you need a motion to table?
I don't. It's the public hearing's been closed, I'm sorry, but you can talk to Steve. Do we need a motion on that, Ken, or since he requested, it be tabled?
I'd move that we table case number ZC 18.04, table it until the May planning commission meeting.
Do I have a second?
Yep, May planning commission meeting.
Okay, I have a motion, a second to postpone until the May meeting. Any further discussion?
No.
No, sir. I'm sorry, the public hearing's closed.
I made a motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, next item on the agenda is public hearing to consider the request of Jason Motter for a multiple occupancy project of Cottage Lane, SD 1808.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this MOP, multiple occupancy project, to be located at the southwest corner, the intersection of Edwards Avenue and Bishop Road, and geographically, this is just west, slightly northwest of the intermediate school. And Chairman Commissioners, I'd like to go through the application and illuminate a few items for you. This does involve gravity sewer, tying into gravity sewer for the sewer service on this particular project. And, Mr. Chairman, you'll notice in there, when we get to the recommendation, there is a request for waiver for 10 LID techniques. They are supplying LID techniques on the project. It has been evaluated by the public works director. So that will be one of the recommendations of approval. Is, in addition, wanted to illuminate the traffic study, is, a traffic study was determined not to be warranted for this site due to the trip generation of the site. That was approved by the engineer of record. Talking about drainage, Mr. Chairman, basically, this is a very simple drainage system on this particular site. Essentially, you have a retention-detention area. Everything from the site sheet flows into that retention-detention area. And, Mr. Chairman, I also wanted to illuminate, you notice this one does have, we refer to colloquially in public works and planning, this is a hammerhead-style driveway. In this particular site, it, the eight units, has a driveway for access purposes that is not requested to be accepted for maintenance by the city, will not be dedicated to the city. So the applicant very wisely conducted a pre-development meeting with staff, and so the layout you see of the street, of the driveway in the development, is, was vetted and approved by the public works director. So I wanted to illuminate that item for you. And so, Mr. Chairman, what we'll do is, there are some conditions of approval, as we talked about, and so the staff's recommendation is approval of the multiple occupancy project. Because, and Chairman Commissioners, because this is an MOP, it involves a great number of elements of the subdivision regulations, but does not require a final plat. There is not a plat, per se, for approval in this scenario. And so, as we're maturing and evaluating the subdivision regulations, you'll see on MOPs from time to time, some conditions of approval. So, for example, the pre-construction meeting is referenced in here. We found a minor edit on one of the civil drawings regarding type A silt fence, noted as a condition of approval, as well as the ADM registration under Item 1. Also note there, Mr. Chairman, we will serve letter for, the will serve letter for the sewer service. I know Mr. Peterson was in the process of drafting it as of this writing, so we know that's in progress. That's a condition of approval that is received. The waiver of the 10 LID techniques, which we mentioned previously. And, Mr. Chairman, because of closeout purposes, since you don't have a final plat approval on an MOP, we've indicated Item Number 4 on there, which basically details the closeout items that would be needed is if it were a traditional subdivision, and to trigger those closeout items being submitted to the city and having the necessary inspections done, we are requesting, prior to the request for a certificate of occupancy for the first building constructed, a request for closeout inspection. And then staff would go and conduct the normal inspections of the various improvements made on the site as if it were a subdivision. This allows a trigger preserved in the approval of the development to make those things happen. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to answer any questions before we turn it over to the applicant.
Do we normally require bonds on MOPs?
Yes, sir. And, Mr. Chairman, so for the sake of not having an extraordinarily lengthy document here, you'll notice it states, for example, in Item C under Item Number 4, inspection of all MOP applicable sections of Article 4, et cetera, and under Item D, all applicable inspection, all MOP applicable sections of Article 6. That is where the various bonding requirements, maintenance bonds, that will be incorporated in that document. So that would be submitted to staff. You folks would not see a final approval on that, but it would go into the operating record of the development.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't adding something.
Buford, I like the format that you're using for reviewing these applications. I think that makes good sense. I also noticed on this one, it was an awful lot, over 20, revise and resubmit. Are we seeing this a little bit early, or are you comfortable that all this is coming in and will be above the board?
And, Mr. Chairman, to respond to Commissioners's request, then, as we're maturing, or at least as I am maturing, as reviewing these applications, it is very likely, you can always do a better job, and you may want to change how you format the staff reports. What I've shown here, and what I used in this case, is that I selected various items that I thought would be beneficial to illuminate for the planning commission when they see the staff report. And so, each one of those items that the initial review reflected revise and resubmit, unfortunately, it didn't print in color on some of the items, but the cure, the item that was submitted or follow-up that was provided that cured that revise and resubmit condition is in each of those items.
Mr. Chairman, it's a bit of a give-and-take. I mean, we sent out a letter saying, "Here's the efficiencies," and they respond back to us. It's just how that happens. It's pretty normal. But when it gets to you guys, I think most of those issues have been resolved and without any problems.
Thank you, Wayne. All right. Jason, do you wish to say anything on behalf of yourself as the developer, or would you like to wait until after I open the public hearing and see if there are any questions specifically you need to answer? Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this point. I do not have anybody listed to speak to the Cottage Lane Fairhope project, a multi-occupancy project on the southwest intersection of Bishop Road and Edwards Avenue. Anybody here like to speak to this item? All right, in that case, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, I'll turn the meeting over to you all. The developer, Jason Motter, is in the blue shirt back there. If you have any questions for him or the staff.
I have a question.
Jason, could you come here?
Could you give me a little layout of what it's going to look like? I'm envisioning a bay point down south, Fairhope.
Well, the property already had an R4 zoning, so instead of doing one building or two buildings with, you know, four homes attached in it, it's just a different concept of splitting it off and doing single-family homes. It's a better look. I think it's more marketable, attractive, so that's what we were after. Instead of just one big building with four units, another big, that's similar to what's exactly right next to that property.
Okay.
So we didn't change the zoning, but we were after something more attractive, marketable, somebody would want to live in there. They're smaller homes, you know, quality construction, but single-family, not attached or duplex or fourplex.
Okay, that explains.
Yeah.
Any more questions for the developer? Jason? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, case SD 18.08 Cottage Lane Fairhope, that we approve subject to staff recommendation.
I've got a motion and a second to approve subject to staff recommendation. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Ken, I'm sorry.
I've voted on the LID waiver. I know it was included as, but subdivision regulations contemplate that we have, that that matter be taken up as part of, but yet separate from the application itself.
I'm sorry, I missed that one.
Ken is requesting that we make a motion to approve the LID waiver, to be more, make sure.
Okay, included in my motion is a...
But he thinks we need to have...
Do you need it separately, Ken?
Yes, please.
All right, then I would move that we approve the LID waiver.
I have a motion, a second to approve the LID waiver. All in favor, any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Ken, do we have, on SD 1812, do you have determination on whether we have a quorum for that? If not, I'll go ahead and take it off the agenda in case anybody in...
I think we do. The, I know that the code contemplates a supermajority of, in our case, six out of nine members to either adopt or amend the comprehensive plan. I know no provision of law that would require a supermajority. A quorum is five, in your case. I know no provision of law that would require a supermajority of six to proceed either on a MOP approval or a regular subdivision approval.
Okay.
I mean, that would be, that could get problematic if you had to have six out of nine every time vote in favor of a subdivision.
Okay. Thank you.
So that means we're not taking...
So we're going to leave that on the...
We're going to leave the Motto's townhomes in?
That's correct.
Okay.
Could you just tell me what's happening there, please, if I couldn't hear?
Yes, sir, there was a question. Still, one of the commissioners is going to recuse herself from SD 1812, and I just wanted, after Ken had a few minutes to do some research during our meeting, I just wanted to make sure that that commissioner recusing herself would still allow us to have a quorum so that we could legally vote on the item.
And the answer?
The answer is yes, we will.
Okay, I'm sorry, I should have, I just didn't hear the conclusion.
All right. All right, next item on the agenda, SD 1809, Buford?
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this application is requesting a two-lot minor subdivision, and the formal name, of course, is replat of Block 53, replat of part of Block 53 of Magnolia Beach. And Chairman Commissioners, this piece of property is northwest to cite it for you geographically. It's northwest of the city's public works and utilities facility. This one is zoned M1 Light Industrial District. The request, of course, the request here is, what will essentially happen is, create a lot around an existing home site, and then the remnant parcel will provide the second, will provide the second lot. A few highlights for you to illuminate from your packet. This is a, definitely a minor subdivision, because no infrastructure, streets or utilities or right-of-ways are proposed in the application. I will note for you at the bottom of Page 2 of your packet, that the survey does reflect the necessary documentation for the 2017 flood maps. We have 2017 FEMA flood maps currently published by the Office of Water Resources of ADCA. That is properly reflected in the survey. And we also have certification via a letter from a professional engineer indicating that for a minor subdivision of this type, that the traffic study is not required, is not warranted due to the trip generation of the site. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, staff recommends approval of the minor subdivision application.
Thank you very much, Buford.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Buford, if the existing residence that's there, and the entire property is zoned M1, right?
Yes, sir, the entire property is zoned M1.
If something catastrophic happened to the existing residence... If something catastrophic happened to the existing residence, would they be able to rebuild that in an M1 zone?
Thank you, Emily.
Within 12 months.
Yes, they would...
Even if it was destroyed, they could still rebuild a residence in an M1 zone?
Our zoning ordinance has a clause that states if a fire or natural disaster were to destroy an existing residence...
A non-conforming use.
They have one year from that date to construct what was previously there.
But there are limits to a non-conforming use on a rebuild. It cannot be any larger or more injurious than the use that was there before.
Yeah, that's right. I just, I know in the county, whenever, I mean, you had to go, basically, you had to go, in that instance, go back for a rezoning to a residential use to be able to...
Yeah, and aren't comparing the counties, the old county ordinance to Fairhope, Fairhope is a little more lenient when it comes to rebuilding in case of...
Fairhope is?
Fairhope is, in the case of emergency, I mean, destruction by a natural disaster or something like that, it's a little more lenient. Now, if you tear it down, it's a different story, yourself, if you tear it down. But if you're asking, is a residence allowed in the M1 district? Is that what you're asking? And I think that the answer is no to that. I'll check and make sure, but I think, I think that...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that you can't build it.
It's not allowed in M1.
If you tore the, if you tore the residence down, then that's not a catastrophic event.
Right.
So you would not be able to rebuild.
Correct. Just if a fire burns it down...
I just wanted to be sure that was...
Just a fire tornado, you could build it back.
Right. Why wouldn't you allow it? That's the building, that's the existing regulation.
And so, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think it's a situation there that a terminology we use sometimes is that you have the opportunity to maintain the existing nonconformity. And so if it burns down, you have the ability to maintain it, to bring it back into existence. But exactly, if it was forcibly removed, then that nonconformity would go away, would vanish.
But I think Ralph is right also. You can't, you can't increase the nonconforming use in the instance, bring it back.
Increase the impact.
That's correct, that's correct. You can, you can maintain and cure, or maybe a better term would be cure it if there was, if there was a catastrophic situation. But exactly, you cannot increase a nonconformity, exactly.
That'd be right. I've testified in court to that effect.
But just to be clear, a residence is not allowed in M1.
Right.
All right, thank you, Buford. Would anybody wish to speak to this item? I don't have anybody on the list here, but this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at this point. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions? Is the developer here by any chance? Yeah, okay, great, thank you, ma'am. Any, if you have any questions, the owner is here as well as the staff. If not, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion, case number SD 1809, we approve the minor subdivision as submitted.
Do I have a second? Charles Johnson has a second on that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously, Emily. Next item on the agenda, SD 1810, Young Oaks subdivision, re-subdivision of lot number two.
Thank you, Lee. This is a public hearing to consider the request of Arton and Schumer Engineering LLC for plat approval of a re-subdivision of lot two, Young Oaks subdivision, two-lot minor subdivision. The largest lot is approximately 40,958 square feet, and the smallest is approximately 38,332 feet. The property is located on the north side of Nichols Avenue, adjacent to Hawthorne Glen, Phase Two, at 8407 Nichols Avenue. The property owners are Linda and David Cooper, and the authorized agent on the project is David Schumer. And if you remember, this came before us a while ago where it was one long parcel, and they took the northern half and rezoned it to a pud, and the southern half was left as R3PGH, which was its original zoning. And so now, all they're doing is splitting the parcel into 1.2 acres, the southern parcel that's owned R3PGH, into 1.2 acre parcel, or, I'm sorry, the entire parcel is 1.82 acres. And then they're breaking it up into a .88 acre parcel and a .94 acre parcel. Basically, they're just splitting the lots. And...
They're splitting them along the Nichols Avenue.
Right, frontage.
Okay.
And there are a few conditions on this one. They are required for buffer signs. I believe they've, they've put, okay, they've ordered them, so when they're put up, we will go out and do a verification of that. The applicant shall provide a fire hydrant, and I believe he told me that he, they paid it today through the building department or sometime this week. And then there are a couple minor details on the plat that were just scribners, errors, and they've been working on those, so I'll verify that before it goes.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody have any questions about this item? Yes, ma'am. And if you'd be so kind as to state your name and your address so we can get on our record.
My name is Margaret Ward, and my address is 272 Hawthorne Glen, Hawthorne Circle. And I just had just a couple of questions. So it's essentially two lots?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's a beautiful wooded area. Is there going to be any effort to keep as many of the trees as possible?
Well, down there along the wetlands, they're required to keep a buffer, and I can't really, I can't remember. I think in some places it was, I think it was the, the stream buffer was greater, so they have to keep a 50-foot buffer along that stream.
Okay. Okay. What is the access? There was a road from Hawthorne Glen that was stopped. I didn't think, it was kind of hard for me to read the map.
Right, the problem with that, that they ran into is it's located right where that stream...
Right.
Is, so that made it kind of awkward for access.
So that's not going to be developed, what is going to be the access? Is it going to be off Nichols or is it going to be off Bishop?
I believe you're going to do off Nichols, right?
Main entrance would be off.
Nichols.
Main access into Scarlet as well. That's just about right. Buffer area.
Right.
Hey, Lee, can you get him to come up?
Yeah, yeah, ma'am. If you have any questions, let me make a list of the questions and then call the developer up rather than going back and forth because we can't hear him with the microphone.
We can't hear you what you're saying.
So any questions you have, just ask, and I'll write them down, and then I'll get the developer to come up.
Okay, it was essentially salvaging the trees, access, if there was going to be a sidewalk, if it was on Nichols, if there was any plans to have a sidewalk access on that.
We didn't discuss sidewalk access.
Okay.
No idea what you're saying.
Hold on.
Okay.
Okay, so Nichols sidewalk was a question that I actually had, and then where the access would come from and if they have any required, any trees salvaged.
That was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know what? I may have missed that. That is...
Anybody else like to, anybody else in the audience have any questions? I'm going to call the developer up in just a second and ask him. If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. And if you could come up so we have our microphone, that'd be great. We have the questions about tree salvage and access, and also, I was concerned about whether or not there'd be a sidewalk on Nichols now that the sidewalk goes down. You know, there's a sidewalk that goes down the full length of, oh, what's it? Booth Road, so...
We haven't seen a sidewalk. This is the first thing I've heard about a sidewalk, but if we're required to participate in a sidewalk, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
And we're not building above the, there's a flood zone area, so she was concerned about the wooded area, so we hope to preserve as much of that as possible.
Excellent. And the access will be off of Nichols?
Off of Nichols, but we also wanted to access back from Scarlet as well.
Commissioners, any questions?
Nope.
What size are the homes?
Well, we haven't decided on the second home, but on the first home, it's, it's about 1,800 square feet on Phase One.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Anything you want to?
No, I was just going to say on that access, because some of that access is at the stream buffer, they would have to stay out of that, only a portion of Scarlet Avenue.
Okay.
And how can you tie into Scarlet Avenue with that being a part of a development?
Well, I think what they, they were talking about is simply from an access to...
If it connects to their land, I mean, that's part of the connectivity ordinance, they could...
It's a public right of...
It's a public street that connects.
Looked like a stub out there.
That's, okay, okay. I was just seeing the cul-de-sac part. I wasn't quite sure.
I would love to see a commissioner have sidewalks being on the Nichols Avenue side since Booth Road has sidewalks all the way down, I mean, another single tactical operation connected the sidewalk from...
Bishop.
Going along, well, along Bishop also from, on Booth Road, from that, I have a mental block of the name of the subdivision all the way to Troyer Booth Road. So it's, all of Booth Road is connected to the soccer field.
Still not clear to me how you get in and out of this place.
Just, just right here off of Nichols. One lot's going to be here, one lot's going to be here. So they would have Nichols Avenue access if they desire. All right. And then they're talking about coming in, you know, through this right here. But there's a little wetland position possibly.
Yeah, I feel it, yes.
They could add the sidewalk as a condition, just add it as a condition of approval.
Okay. Commissioners, any further questions? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman. Case, case SD 18.10, two-lot subdivision. I would recommend that we approve subject staff recommendations with an additional recommendation to include sidewalks along, along, what is that, Nichols?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, including the additional condition.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Next item on the agenda, SD 1811, three-lot minor subdivision, Van Antwerp Park West.
And Chairman, Commissioners, Van Antwerp Park West, this is located just west of the previously approved Van Antwerp Park subdivision. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll illuminate some items for you in the application, and then it'll take a bit of a discussion to explain the conditions of approval. We'll get there momentarily. This is, this is a three-lot minor subdivision because this application does not request construction of infrastructure, right-of-ways, et cetera. We'll explain how that works with the major subdivision momentarily. The utility infrastructure that will service this will be constructed by the major subdivision. From a, and Chairman, Commissioners, from a drainage standpoint, wanted to make a drainage note right here, is that the applicant, then the engineer of record, they provided us some coordinating drawings from the major subdivision that basically show a roll curb that will be built along Pensacola Avenue. As you'll recall, Pensacola Avenue will be opened and paved from where it terminates with Tensaw Avenue, and it will, Pensacola Avenue will proceed and then tie into North Mobile Street. The drainage from this site will basically sheet flow across that street and be absorbed by the major subdivision on the east side. And so we don't necessarily have infrastructure per se as a part of this application, but we do have coordinating drawings showing how the drainage will be held. Wanted to make certain we illuminated that. Another issue, Mr. Chairman, is that as far as this application is concerned, there are no heritage trees, trees above 24 inches DBH, that will be affected by this application. The traffic study is not required. Have that information from the engineer of record. One of the conditions of approval will be sidewalks shall be furnished for this minor subdivision, and that'll be illuminated for you in the conditions of approval. And so, Mr. Chairman, if you go to the last page of your packet prior to the, prior to the application, after the preparation of this staff report and, but before tonight's meeting, we had some additional discussions with the applicant. So what I need to do, Chairman and Commissioners, I need to verbalize into the record and restate some of the conditions for approval. First of all, items one and two, we do not wish to consider. In replacement of those, one, that we, that we have as a condition of approval, that submission of a fire flow model, and the reason for that fire flow model is that the Van Antwerp Park major subdivision will install a brand-new fire hydrant very near these subject lots. So we wish to have as a condition of approval to this requirement, a fire flow of that system once it is built. That'd be a condition of approval to submit. Secondly, the various will serve letters for utilities because those have to be constructed by the major subdivision. We wish for those to be a condition of approval for this minor subdivision. Another question, another issue and another condition of approval, Chairman, Commissioners, is the, in lieu of how the, the requests, the, in lieu of how the, the conditions of approval were listed in items one and two. Normally, in a minor subdivision, because a minor subdivision attains simultaneous, attains simultaneous preliminary and final approval, that has to occur within 60 days. What the applicant wishes to do is to ask, and as a condition of this approval, ask the planning commission to allow that process to be 180 days. What that will do is it will allow the improvements necessary for the major subdivision that will serve the minor subdivision to be constructed. It is possible that during that 180-day period, the applicant may come back in and request an extension of that to allow those improvements to occur. Item number three, as stated in the recommendation, will remain as stated, that sidewalks shall be constructed at the time of home construction on subject property, and that, that sidewalk details and will be submitted with the building plans when the homes to be constructed receive their, receive their request for building permits. So Chairman, Commissioners, before we turn that over to the, before we turn that over to the applicant, I'll be happy to restate or clarify why the conditions of approval are how I've, how I've verbalized them into the record.
Okay, so number one, fire flow. Number two, get the will serve letter on the utilities. Number three, sidewalks. Number four, 180 days.
Yes, sir. That will be, that will be, that will be perfectly fine, and we can just have it in the order which, which the chairman has stated.
And our attorney, Ken Watson, has no issue with any of this as far as, you know, I mean, it's like we're looking at these separate books together. You're, you all right with all that?
Yeah, I had input on this.
Okay. That's good enough for me. Okay. That, in that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for this item, Van Antwerp, three-lot minor subdivision. Does anybody wish to speak to this item from the audience? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. Does, Commissioners, I see the engineer of record is back there. If you have any questions, if you have any questions for the engineer or for the, this staff?
I got a question for Buford. Why wouldn't they want to be signing off on the plat until the house was built or whatever? I never saw that come up before.
And, Mr. Chairman, to answer the Commissioner's question, a minor subdivision does not to, in order to have a minor subdivision, you do not have the creation of infrastructure. In addition, in this minor subdivision scenario, subdivisions must front upon a paved, publicly-maintained street or road.
I got you.
And so this will allow the construction of the necessary publicly-maintained paved street or road.
Well stated. Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I'll take your call for an engineer.
Do you have any questions?
I'll take your call for me.
No, I just said, I just pointed out that he's here if you have any questions. I'm sorry. With no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman. Case SD 18.11, Van Antwerp Park West, minor subdivision. I move that we approve it subject to staff recommendations as modified by Mr. Buford and stated by Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. And just for clarity... I have a motion and a second, and just for clarity, there are, Emily, the four items are fire flow, the will serve letter for the utilities, sidewalks, 180 days. Alright. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Holly is gonna recuse herself on the next item, SD 1812, and this is a public hearing to consider the request of SC Civil Engineering for a multiple occupancy approval of Montrose Town Homes, an 18-unit project. Property is located on the south side of Parker Road, directly across from Trentino.
And Chairman Commissioners, this site, this is the site of the former Fly Creek Tennis Center, and I believe they had a swim center there as well circa mid-1990s, and that has long since been removed, and so this...
They had the best lifeguard in the world there back in 1983, I'll tell ya.
And, and Chairman Commissioners, the, this proposal will have a multiple occupancy project, it will be 18 units, three buildings with six units each. This is actually zoned by Baldwin County. It falls under Baldwin County zoning classification RMF-6. In addition, there is a pending application for a county PRD planned residential development. So there are certain elements and aspects of the application that are, from a zoning standpoint, from a purely zoning standpoint, will be reviewed and approved by county, by the county. As terms of Fairhope staff and Fairhope requirements, we're utilizing the MOP because of the lot count and the units, so therefore, that is what you will see reflected in this application. And so, I'll illuminate certain items in our application. The first thing I'd like to illuminate, Chairman Commissioners, at the bottom of page two, and I'll, we wanted to make certain that we vetted certain aspects of the application, is we applied, we verified the application of the, the tree ordinance, and we had our horticulturist evaluate the landscape plan for the site, and we went through the review and comment period, and that was revised, and we do have an approved landscape plan by the, by the City of Fairhope Horticulturist, and so therefore, their drawings reflect preserved trees for the site. In addition, in part of the vetting process, we understood, because of its proximity and location within Montrose, we wanted to verify if there was any application of the Baldwin County planning and zoning from their staff, we verified whether this would fall under the county's architectural review board requirements. And, and we have correspondence from county staff indicating that this particular property does not fall in that portion of historic Montrose. So there was, there is not a required county architectural review board process for subject property. We have the necessary correspondence to verify that this is also a concurrent application with the county. We've, from an erosion control standpoint, we have added some, added some additional notations. Because the city's erosion control requirements for a project, an active project, have been revised, they are reflected on this site. We asked the engineer of record to evaluate the off-site existing drainage system, where you have receiving waters, and that was evaluated, and we have correspondence that was approved, reviewed and approved by our public works director. And, Mr. Chairman, the, they did review, did review the stormwater and drainage plans, review, that were approved by the public works director. Traffic study is not warranted for this site, and we have necessary documentation that goes with that. Setback issues are in compliance with City of Fairhope requirements, as well as height issues do meet our requirements, but again, the ultimate approving authority is Baldwin County for that type of, for, for this type of development. But I did want to make certain that we illuminate that it does comply with Fairhope requirements if ours did apply. So with that, Mr. Chairman, this is very similar, the, the list of conditions of approval here are very similar to what we saw on the previous MOP application. So for example, just to, just to summarize them very briefly, the pre-construction conference, the fire flow model, which in this case would have to be performed and furnished by Daphne Utilities. They are the domestic water supplier to the site, that's a condition of approval. The various will serve letters from Fairhope Public Utilities, which we know are in progress, is a condition of approval. And as we've mirrored, basically mirrored, the closeout requirements for this MOP, mirror that, virtually mirror that of the previous MOP, so that way we can have the closeout requirements. Again, it'll be before a strategic occupancy is allowed on one of the first buildings constructed, that we go through that closeout process, and that's reflected in the conditions of approval. And with that, Mr. Chairman, the staff recommends approval of the MOP with the conditions of approval as stated. Be happy to take questions before we turn it over to the applicant.
Any questions? No, thank you, Buford. I'll go ahead, I see Larry Smith here, the engineer on this. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir. And again, if you'll be so kind as to state your name and your address for...
I will, thank you. My name is Steve Hanson, I live on 7322 JV Cummings Drive in the Flying Creek subdivision. And I'm most curious on water flow, when the rain comes three, four, and five inches in a very short period of time. Right now, it's water, I mean, the water flows off of the property now, and it's all land. From the drawings that I've seen, at least 60, maybe 70 percent is now gonna either be building, or it's gonna be parking lots. And have the engineering studies been done to prove that the water flow and the overflow area will support, the amount of water will come off seven inches of rain in three or four hours, which, if you've been around here for the last couple of years, it's not a once every 100 years, it is two or three times a year.
Sure.
Because right now, it flows off, down, across the way, onto JV Cummings. The whole, the, the street that, and, that brings you into Flying Creek is Alice Lane, and I don't live along, excuse me, I don't live along there, but I'm understanding the water flows off now. Well, now, if there's no place to soak in, where's it gonna go? And what is the engineering study to support seven inches of rain in a short period of time?
So your question is just about the water retention and what they plan to do with the...
Yes. Water retention, will it, will it support that and not take out the, the lots that are below it?
Certainly, yes, sir. I'll go ahead, well, I'll call the engineer up and ask what he's going to say. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? Any questions? Alright, in that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Larry, can you address the water retention on this, and then we'll see if the engineers have any, I mean, if the Commissioners have any further questions?
Yes, we have looked at the storm system. There's an existing 27-inch pipe that was stubbed out to this property. I can only assume that it was, because it showed up on the survey, showing the existing conditions before the demolition occurred on the property. That, that 27-inch pipe, it had yard inlets spaced along the property line. Its intent was to capture the runoff when everything was demolished, now everything's just sheet flowing into the right-of-way that's downstream of us. Our storm system and our curbing will capture all the developed area, it'll capture it, send it to a detention pond, and then it'll connect onto that existing 27-inch pipe that still remains on the property. So, the only thing that would sheet flow off of our property is going to be the southern existing slope, as it, if you go out there today, there's, from the existing road, there's a slope going down to that existing drive. That'll be the only thing that remains that's not captured by our stormwater system, and that's all undeveloped green space.
I see, I could add too, our city engineers have reviewed this as well, and it does meet our, the city's drainage regulations.
Where, where's, where's the 27-inch pipe? Is it off the southeast corner?
Let's say here, actually, I can put it on their screen right here. Can, if they can flip my screen on to y'all's. You can't, is, is the guy hiding in the room over there? Alright. Oh. He's, he's working. I see the screen button moving.
You woke him up. Who maintains that, Larry? Is that a county culvert, or is that a...
Um, that, that culvert is private on our property, and then it enters into the right-of-way, which becomes the city's right-of-way. Now, I gotta make my brain think back.
You're looking at the south end of that development now.
Alright, there's, there's a 27-inch culvert with inlets, and it's all existing, going like that.
Does it go under, under the, the street that was part of Flying Creek?
Yeah, it connects to a curb inlet right there.
Uh-huh.
And then it goes down this direction to another, I believe it was a drop, no, it's another curb inlet, right. Drop inlet right here, goes over to there, to a curb inlet across the street, and then it goes between two lots, down an easement.
To the creek.
To the creek.
What does the, how does the detention pond, how does the water in the detention pond get to that culvert?
Alright, I didn't draw this in the right location. That box is right there. Our detention pond has an outfall structure right here.
Uh-huh.
And then we've got a new structure that comes over and connects to that box, existing box.
Okay.
So, these curbs all along this area here and here are capturing all the developed runoff, and all of this water is being diverted into this detention pond here.
Okay, got it. Do we need to look at the pipe and make sure it's in good shape? I know I tried to tie into some oak over it one time, and it...
Yes, Richard Johnson asked me to go do that, so I provided him with some photographs of the culverts, went and inspected it all. The pipes are all clean and in good condition, so.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't think the answer to my question...
My question was...
My question is, was an engineering study done, so the six to, three to seven inches of water in a very short period of time, is the system...
Yes, sir, that, that is required by the city ordinance, and he's the engineer, and he just showed us how it works, and so this does meet the 100-year...
Yeah, yeah, this storm system was designed to meet the 100-year, 24-hour storm event, which I believe, if I'm off the top of my head, is a 14-inch rain event.
Point of information, all of this drainage that you're talking about...
Can you ask me the question, and then I'll restate it, please, sir? Because the public hearing has been closed, and, but I'll let you ask the question, but I just want to make sure it gets in the...
You're saying something that's not true, for one thing.
I can't hear him.
First off, the green space that he talks about that's below the south end of the development is not undeveloped green space, it's residential lots that are currently for sale, and, you know, they're, they're not gonna want drainage on that. Second of all, everything you've talked about, the 27-inch pipe and the culverts and so forth, are on Flying Creek property, and that's not a public street, it's a private street, and we've had to maintain it all these years, so I don't understand why you get to use that, when it can barely contain what we've got coming down the street now from, from, above Parker.
Larry, can you, basically, questions whether that pipe is a public, pipes are...
Is it in an easement? Mr. Chairman, the audio, the YouTube feed, we cannot hear the questions from the audience.
Right, so I shouldn't have allowed that, the public hearing was closed.
So everybody, because there's about a thousand people watching this, so we can hear the questions they're asking.
A thousand people.
Could you restate the question?
If you want to restate the question.
Can you also give me your name and address, please?
Absolutely. It's Gordon Cooper. I'm, I'm president of the Flying Creek Homeowners Association, and I live on Alice Lane, basically, across from this. Our subdivision abuts this subdivision, or this development, all the way on the west side of it and all the way on the south side of it. We are in a situation where the streets in our subdivision are private. We maintain the streets ourselves, we always have, we have gates, and that's why the, the city has never taken over our, our streets, or our streetlights or anything like that. We also maintain these 27-inch pipes, and we've had a problem in the past, where we've had one get clogged, and the whole thing backed up, and it cost, I don't know, in the neighborhood of about $10,000 to, to fix it. If we're allowing this whole development to drain into our private drainage situation, I don't see that, how that's gonna help us. And I don't see also, and I think I pointed this out in my letter to y'all, how a roll curb is gonna protect us from all that water running down the perimeter streets, and, and right over the cliff, as it were. The, the portion of JV Cummings that's on the south side of that is about 10 feet below the grade of the townhomes, and it's like, it looks like Niagara Falls when, when water comes over there. And, you know, the whole subdivision from, you know, above Parker and on down, excuse me, is, is basically downhill, so the water's all gonna run that way naturally. And a roll curb is not gonna protect it, it doesn't protect us, when the water comes down Alice Lane and goes right down to, into the drainage easements. There is another drainage easement that's on the south, southeast corner of the developed property, which they could possibly use. I don't know what's over there, but, but it's on the plat, and, and I think that might be a better solution than, than what they're proposing to go right onto our private property.
Okay, sir. Alright, Larry, can you address that, please?
Uh, yes. The green space I was referring to is actually on our...
That's y'all's green space, not the lot.
Yeah, and we're not, I wasn't referring to the lots that were further south. As far as the culvert that's coming onto the property, it, it is yard inlet, so it's capturing the runoff from this property. Just as we can't put more water on somebody, they can't cut our water off, and I would assume those inlets were designed when Fly Creek was put in, and this whole area was developed. He is correct, there is a drain, another drainage easement to the north of us, but that is also about 15 feet higher than the developed portions of this property. You know, upstream of the inlet where that 27-inch pipe is tying in, there, there's just the single inlet in Cummings, and then it jumps up to a 30-inch pipe after us. The whole, that whole system is serving this parcel, and it is already in existence on the parcel, and we're connecting to that. As far as the concerns about capturing the runoff, there are multiple inlets upstream of that lower section that are capturing runoff. We're not just sending it all to one inlet and expecting the roll curb to capture the entire development and send it to one inlet. We have multiple inlets throughout the site that's being, that are capturing the runoff through these roll curbs.
It should be noted that the city engineer reviewed this as well, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. If I got a couple comments, this piece of property is actually in the county, this, this is not in the city corporate limits. This is in the county, it is zoned in the county, I believe it's been recently rezoned to R6, which is one of the higher, one of their higher densities. So we're doing, it's in our ETJ, Ex-Territorial Jurisdiction, so this is a MOP. So our scope of authority is only within the subregs and the drainage requirements within those subregs. What Mr. Smith has submitted to us has been reviewed by Richard Johnson, our, our engineer on staff, public works director, and has met those standards. Now, if there's other, other concerns other than that, then I understand that, just wanna make sure that we're clear on what our review was based off of, and that was based off the subregs and the drainage standards within the subregs.
Miss, there's any question, the public hearing's closing. Any more questions for Larry Smith while he's up here?
Are the yard inlets cleaned out well there? I mean, the guy's saying there's water going off the west side and the south side, are they, I mean, is the capturing the water, or is it just bypassing inlet because they're full of leaves, or...
No, the, the reason it's bypassing is the existing infrastr, or the existing development that was, used to be there is now demolished, except for, there's a little bit of concrete left from some of the tennis courts and stuff like that. But now that everything's gone, it, it is a multi-level, if you go out there, you've got first drop, then it's kind of a plateau, then it drops again, and so everything is right, currently sheet flowing to the road. We're gonna stop that and...
It's just not directed to the inlets that are out there now.
It's not directed to the inlets.
But it may help, then, really, in, in one way.
Yeah.
Any further questions? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Are we up for a motion? What about Charles, you got a motion for us?
Oh, that's a pressing speed for me.
Oh, that's right. You'd better go with Holly. Yeah, I'd make a motion for case SD 18.12 Montrose Town Homes MOP that we approve this county's, I mean, for the city's portion of it, the MOP, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve subject to staff recommendations. Any further comments, questions?
One other thing before we go. When does the county hear this? Just so these gentlemen would know.
Do you know the date of the county hearing on that?
I apologize, I don't.
Larry?
Ms. Larry?
They all want to see you.
Yeah, they, hold on a second. It's being heard this Thursday.
This Thursday?
Correct.
Did y'all get that?
That's for the PRD.
Fighting question, or is it a fighting question?
Yeah.
And where is that?
That's in Robertsdale at the Central Annex. It's on Palmer, I think that's Palmer Street.
If I could explain how this happens, this is in the county, the city's ETJ. The county has zoning authority. They have requested that the county a planned residential development, which basically they lay out the townhomes. The county commission has the ultimate authority on how this is designed and how it looks. This is not in our zoned area. And so I think that's what, that's what this process has a tandem track. It goes through the city for our section and our regulations require for a multiple occupancy permit, MOP. And then on the same track, because it's in the county zoned area, they're going down the track with the county to get the zoning adequate to meet the needs of this development. So you've got two tandem processes going on. The actual design and configuration and building sizes, all those things are handled through the county. Ours is basically just based off what the county, what has been approved by the county so far.
They generally, on the first Thursday of the month, at 6 o'clock, at Central Annex in Robertsdale. And if you want to have input into the PRD, which is the real guts of this application, then I would suggest you attend their meeting and find out what's going on there.
We're at, and Flying Creek is in Fairhope.
That's all right. You're dealing with a project that's in the county.
We were expecting somebody from the city, the residents of Fairhope. And maybe that rules don't allow you to protect us, but that's really frustrating.
Well, and I understand the frustration. We are bound by the subregs that's been adopted. And I can assure you, those things are reviewed very rigorously from the subregs. But we do have to have adopted standards and which apply throughout the city and the city's ex-territorial jurisdiction. And we take that very seriously, of course. You know, there are cases where, you know, people aren't happy with those rules. But we take those very seriously and we ensure that the engineers such as Mr. Smith and others who apply those, that we go back and check and verify with our own engineers to make sure that's done correctly. So you're basically getting a dual review.
I think our attorney has something he wants to.
Separate from the question of whether the water can be, from a technical engineering perspective, can be handled by whatever system they're building or connecting to, under the subdivision regs, it's contemplated that the drainage will go into the right of way. And here, the public's right of way. And here, apparently, that's not happening. If some portion, if this 27-inch pipe has an opening or an inlet on the land to be developed, that's fine. But if it's going to leave that site and have to traverse private property, a drainage system owned privately, they need an easement. And the subdivision regulations require that they have an easement. I don't know whether that's, I don't know whether those are the facts or not. It sounded like they were. And I don't know whether Richard Johnson knew that some portion of the drainway being proposed for this development is on somebody else's property that is not public.
Well, the question, the question would be, Ken, a little bit, a little bit of history about this. The same developer that did Flying Creek also did the tennis center. These two properties were separate developments, which would, I'm not making up some stuff. I don't know this for fact, but I would guess that when he did the tennis center, which came first and then did Flying Creek, because he owned both properties, if there in fact is an easement that goes between two lots with a 27-inch pipe in it, he probably put it there. Now, now whether or not that has anything to do with anything is another question.
Well, if it had, what you're saying is there was common ownership or common development. So it was known by that one person or entity that both were going to use this 27-inch pipe, that would be fine. But if it got separated, the people who need to use it now need to have reserve that right or acquire it now.
And what we don't know is whether they said.
I just don't have the fact, we just don't have the facts.
No.
And Richard Johnson may have them and may know the answer. I just.
He may have said, or actually said, an easement of.
The subdivision regulations contemplate that you discharge to the public right of way or to a private easement. And I'm just raising the question if they have one or not.
And the engineer suggested that it was moving into a public.
Right of way.
Right of way, and it's not. So they didn't have, the facts, and it may have been misspoken, but the facts weren't presented accurately from what we heard.
So Ken, what do you suggest we do? Approve subject to?
Is there an issue with continuing it? Getting the answer to that question? Or if an easement is needed, allow them an opportunity to try to get one?
I can possibly help with that. I have a.
Wait, come back up to the microphone, please.
So, Mr. Chairman, just a reminder, we have had the public hearing. So that would mean a, in this case, in this case, tabling?
Okay, I just, there is an existing easement that he talked about. But they're dumping all this water from, onto private right of way in order to get to that easement. And that's what we're objecting to. There is another easement on the southeast corner of that subdivision, of the proposed subdivision, that they could be using, that wouldn't affect us. But they might have to do some more work to make that work. I don't know. But what we're objecting to is we have to maintain that. And it, and when we have heavy rains like that, we, that whole 27-inch pipe gets full.
Ken, what about out in the country when you've got, you know, just a little ditch that runs through one person's property into another person's property? And when they come and subdivide that first piece of property into 12 lots and put the retention, the water still runs right through the other person's property, even though there's not a, even though there's not an easement there? I mean, we, in my 16 years on this, we've probably approved 100 subdivisions where the water's just continually going down the same little ditch or stream or wherever it has without any official, you know, easement of drainage.
If it's a natural feature or something that was there that, you know, I don't want to call it ancient, but for a period of time that everybody had noticed of it and knew it was something that was needed in common, that would probably be okay. But I think what we're talking about here are artificial structures. Yeah, a 27-inch pipe didn't exist naturally.
I mean, I've got water that comes across the three-acre lot that I own next door to me. Does that mean I can stop everybody uphill or developing it by just saying?
No, that means you shouldn't have.
You know, I don't have, you don't have an easement and I'm not selling you one?
Is it a natural?
Let's let Larry.
Yeah, what we're just asking is that you're not.
I'm just asking that, Ken, can I just tell everybody in the 120 acres up above me, sorry, guys, y'all can't develop your property because your water's coming through my land and I don't want it. You don't have an easement and I'm not selling you one. I mean, that doesn't make legal sense to me.
No, but you have to find a way to make it work.
Well, I'm just asking the question because, you know, we've done this so many times without easements that I'm just asking.
But the thing of it is, you shouldn't be doing that. You shouldn't be allowing stormwater runoff onto adjacent properties.
There's no way you can't allow stormwater.
I was always taught.
On adjacent properties.
I've always been taught, we're digressing. But I've always been taught, Ken, that no more water could run where it's running than was prior to the development.
If it's the natural flow of water of upper owner has the right, can't concentrate or call it to flow more rapidly in a greater concentration than it would naturally. If you live downhill, you're taking the water. That is the law. I don't think that's what we're talking about.
Well, and I don't mean to be argumentative, but why is it different? Because it's a pipe or?
Because it's being collected off of this development and channeled into one location.
So what are you saying? Is if you leave it, let it sheet flow downhill and that's better than?
Saying that if you want to discharge water like this, I mean, I think our own subdivision regulations, well, I know they contemplate discharge to drainage infrastructure in the public right of way. I mean, if you can't do that, if the topographic features or whatever are such that you can't do it, or regulations say you can put it in a private easement, but you've got to have an easement.
What's up?
I'm sure that he said there was.
Larry, what are you?
I mean, if someone said there is an easement?
Is there an easement there, Larry, that?
I don't know that one way or the other, to be honest with you. But I wanted to back up a few steps, kind of expanding on what Ken had said and what we've all been saying is the natural flow of water is downhill to that existing residential neighborhood. They obviously knew that when they developed it. That's why the 27-inch pipe was installed, to be able to collect it because they were cutting it off and they didn't want that five acres to continue to sheet flow onto this road. We are utilizing the infrastructure that was built as part of this development. The alternative would be for us to back up 10 feet. We'll put a head wall and we'll discharge our, we'll put a level spreader and we'll discharge our water to the surface, which is the even worse scenario, is still going to end up in that storm system because that is the natural flow of water. Because if we, we would be doing exactly what Ken described. We come off the property 10 feet, we put a head wall, we put a level spreader, we disperse the water so it just sheet flows evenly. It's going to hit that pavement. It's going to go into the same inlet we are already connecting to because that's the natural flow.
Do you have the old, by chance, do you have the old plat of Flying Creek Racquet Club?
I have the old survey that was done of the racquet club, yes. I don't have it on me today.
The development port, part of it or the perimeter survey?
No, it was as-built survey after the fact. It showed all the existing infrastructure.
Do you know, do you remember? Does it show this inlet?
Yeah, it shows all the inlets, yes.
So the ones that we're talking about that go to the 27-inch pipe are shown on that?
Correct.
But it's on a private street.
Oh, I'm talking about.
Same developer did both projects.
Don't care.
Well, I know you don't care now, but that's not the point.
Well, are we saying there may be a recorded plat showing both of these lots with that pipe and an inlet?
That's what I'm wondering.
Or head walls in connection with the approval and recordation of that plat? If you have that, then you, I think we're there.
He may have said it's not.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I was talking to Holly. She was asking if we're done.
And maybe that's the question. Maybe that's the question that needs to be answered. I mean, is there an easement?
Again, I'll say.
You know who you need to ask, right? Yeah.
Well, I have filled in the developer.
He would have the flats of both of them.
Well, we've got a motion and a second. We can approve it subject to there being an easement or we can approve it subject to meeting the drainage.
Or we can withdraw a motion and a second and table it for.
We can table it for 30 days. I mean, ultimately, the water's going to go back there one way or the other. They can't stop it.
It's going to go that way. It's not.
Whether one of the underground or overground is coming one way or the other.
Well, I'd say can we request a condition of approval that if we can't resolve the easement, that we'll just do it as I described? I mean, that doesn't change any of our drainage calculations. I think it'd be the worst condition. I think they would prefer it to be piped. But I don't think they want the development period and that's what I'm hearing. But.
You want to make assumptions, don't make assumptions. Do you want to approve it subject to there being an easement?
Yeah, yeah, let me tell you.
If not, they can then bring it back at another date.
Who made that motion? Who said? Okay.
I'll withdraw it if you want.
If I modify it, will you second it?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may eject very briefly, I'm very sorry. If the intention is, if we do receive a new motion to table it, let's table it to the next meeting, not table it for 30 days.
That's right.
Because of where the meeting falls on the calendar, so.
I don't think we're going to table. I think we're going to make a motion subject to, I'm assuming you're going to make it subject to there being a.
We're going to make a subject staff recommendation and the, there being an easement that allows that water to run to Flack Creek.
Sounds good.
You guys, anything else?
I'm sorry, missed the final, but I assume that you're subject to staff recommendations and what was the last part?
I'm going to give it to you right now.
All right.
All right, I want to modify my motion on, on case number SD 18.12 Montrose Town Homes MOP that we approve subject to staff recommendations and that there is an easement for storm water, an easement for storm water off of this property to Flack Creek.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Larry, do you have a question?
I just want to clarify because it sounds like we're required to have an easement. Understand, if we're going to connect to the storm system, we are required, there's been raised that we need an easement. But I just want to make sure it's understood that to discharge to the downstream property, we don't necessarily need an easement. Because, I mean, we have that right. It's just if we want to connect to the storm system.
That is correct. I think if you don't have an easement already, I think you go to them and ask if they'll sell or give you an easement and show them what option B is.
Okay.
Or cop a deal with them that y'all be responsible for maintaining that 27-inch pipe and take it off of them, take the burden off of them.
All right, motion and a second. Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously with one, with one abstention of Holly. All right. Oh, wait, just one moment while Holly gets back in.
That's what I call a real abstention, when she gets up and just absolutely leaves.
I'd be back there a lot on the couch as many as I can for lunch today. You might hear me snoring through the door.
Welcome back, Holly.
Welcome back, madam. Next item on the agenda, SD 1813. So we couldn't go without you. SD 1813, public hearing to consider, Dewberry, final plat approval of the Verandis Phase 2, a 45-lot subdivision.
Thank you. The subject property is unzoned, but located within the City of Fairhope Planning, Permitting and Scalise jurisdictions. The investors in this project are Trey Corte and Bruce Bigler. The property owner is single tax and the authorized agent is Steve Pumpfree with Dewberry. The largest lot in the subdivision is 21,685 square feet. The smallest is 14,000 square feet. And the total tract size is 12.98 acres. This was processed as a village subdivision. And one of the conditions when it was approved was sidewalks along Lawrence Road should be installed. The applicant shall work with the county regarding this condition. And I'll get into that for, we did an inspection and they did not have a sidewalk along Lawrence Road. And so we've requested the applicant show us documentation from Baldwin County. That's a condition of approval. This particular subdivision.
I'm sorry, show documentation of what?
That the county did not want that sidewalk there. Otherwise, they need to put it in. You know, they left it up to the county, but we need verification that the county said no, no sidewalk is going to be allowed there.
I drove by today and I was wondering where it was. I mean, I don't know, you know, their school is just right on the other side of Lawrence Road there. And you got this dense subdivision where people can walk to school, should walk to school. I can't believe there's not sidewalks in front of, you know, St. Michael, but.
Right. Well, the engineer, I asked him about it and he said that. Right. Well, the engineer, I asked him about it and he said that the county did not want them. So I just want verification from the county that that was the case, written documentation. The applicant, this particular subdivision, the applicant chose to be 90% complete, which is allowed in our regulations. But at the time it was submitted, we didn't have as-built and a final inspection done. So we conducted a final inspection on March 21st. So there are some punch list items that they still need to complete. And the condition of approval that we have are a completed final punch list, meeting the approval of City of Fairhope Department Supervisors, documentation from Baldwin County regarding the removal of the sidewalk on Lawrence Road, and that the applicant shall submit required agreements, financial guarantees, sign engineer's cost estimate. They've submitted all those except for the subdivision bond itself. And they submitted that. They're working on some wording with it to meet the standards that we typically require. And they're going to submit that, but they have not done that to date. And, excuse me, Richard Johnson and Richard Peterson have been given all the submittals required, but their approvals are pending. So...
Wait, question. Nancy, the houses that are along Lawrence Road, I am assuming, and I don't want to assume erroneously, but I'm assuming that it looks like 91 through 96, do all those houses face Pillar Street? Well, the houses, they're not going to face Lawrence Road, right?
No, there's an existing fence that's been constructed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right.
Anybody wants to speak on behalf of developer, Steve?
Let me just say, we did coordinate with the county. Initially, the county said no sidewalk. When it was brought up again, so much time has passed, I think they said, well, maybe we need to think about it. But we've met with them. There is a ditch on that side of the road. They said it's going to make it problematic for putting that in. There are internal sidewalks within the development. As you just pointed out, the lots front internal to the development, not to Lawrence Road. And all those sidewalks go back out to 104. And there's a sidewalk on 104 that would take you back to that intersection. Mr. Chairman, you're referring to, I guess, to go north through the high school. So...
I'm just referring to at some point, and I mean, I'm crazy on sidewalks. I mean, everybody talks about water, water, water. And I sit there and I think, in my lifetime, I can think of between Fish River and Mobile Bay, off the top of my head, three people that have been caused health issues by dirty water. On the other hand, how many people have been run over? Old folks have fallen and broken hips, kids being hit on bicycles with no sidewalks. And I consider sidewalks more of a safety issue than, you know, the clean water and the water runoff. And I'm just a little bit crazy on it, you know, thinking of everybody from the McDuffs to, you know, I could just list hundreds of people run over and killed due to lack of sidewalks. And here's an area within three quarters of a mile away as I get on my soapbox, three quarters of a mile away from, you know, a high school that's, you know, going to grow and grow in an area that's, you know, going to grow commercially and we're not requiring sidewalks. And now there's a ditch there. And now after the ditch is there and the big, you know, eight-foot tall fence is there, it's so difficult to come back then and get right of ways. I mean, I can tell you this from being president of the Single Tax Corporation, where we built sidewalks on Bishop Road, we've built them on Booth Road, we've gone out Fairhope Avenue, we've built, you know, tons of sidewalks. And I don't have a PhD in it, but I at least have a master's in it. And they're not that overly expensive, you know? We had 57 kids walking in the street every single day out there on, on what's the street? No, I'm thinking of the one where the soccer fields are.
Manly.
Manly Road, going to the school every day. I mean, shame on us, society, not having sidewalks there. And finally, we were able to rationalize at the Single Tax Corporation that we were connecting one of our subdivisions there at Founders out to the new soccer fields. And we built it for $17,000. And now, you know, 50 kids are walking on that sidewalk every day going to school. But at some point, you know, the sidewalk's going to be built there. It's just going to be, it's tougher when you don't have the right of ways and the easements and you've got somebody there that doesn't want the sidewalk there because the wrong type of people are going to come through town, like what happened on us on Morphe, where we wanted to, you know, connect the sidewalks all the way from Greeno going out to Thompson Hall Road. But the people in the middle just don't want to give the right of ways for that. So that's why I'm so strong on doing these sidewalks when the subdivision's done, because I've done them after they've been done and it's 10 times harder. Anyway, that's my pet peeve. But I'll vote for it as long as, you know, you get a letter from the county.
Yeah, and that's the only thing I can say to you, Mr. Chairman, is that we've contacted the, this is coming from the county. The ditch is already, they've been there. So I guess it's an issue with the cross slope of that, cross section of that highway, being able to get it in. So that's what they've been telling us. So we'll provide that. So I know you're going to need that before we can proceed. But other than that, the other issues we've, we're working on. Nancy's been good working with us on that and been kind of back and forth. But we're getting real close to having everything finished up.
Only other question was on both of the retention ponds. The water was very brown. Will that be flushed out eventually? Or is, because it looked fairly sandy out there, the soil type. But then on the two retention ponds, the water was really brown out there. And I was just wondering if that's something that's just temporary.
I think a lot of this is because you get these first flushes after the development's done, you're getting some of the runoff. But as we get more of the grass to come in, that'll clear, that pond will clear up.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe we also...
It's actually doing its job when it shows that.
We also asked them to run a measurement on the pond, just to make sure it still had the capacity and provide a certification letter.
Any questions, commissioners? No. All right. Thanks. See, if I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll close the public hearing and turn the meeting back over to the commissioners. Any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve with staff recommendation and conditions.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right. Motion passes unanimously.
Way to go, Holly.
Well, at least I got to say my pet peeve. But anyway, sorry about that, guys, that I'm keeping you here longer tonight. I know everybody's ready to go eat dinner. SR 1803, Request of HMR for Approval of Century Bank.
Okay. The property owner is Peter Van Ligen of Century Bank. Robert Cummings is the applicant's authorized representative. And the big concern on here was that the applicant could make those landscape buffers, and they have successfully done that. It's a small site. We did ask that they put the landscape buffers in the site data table, just to keep it clear. They put it on the construction drawings, but we wanted, I mean, the landscape plan, but we want it on the site data table. We just asked them to do some screening details, and I believe they've submitted those to us. There was some question about the buffer for the compatibility. We required some additional shrubs per our regulations. And then there's a little confusion on the fence that's to the west side of the property. The fence needs to be on their property, so they need to put up their own fence. So that was not written in here. We just talked about it and found out that it was actually the adjacent property, not their property. So that needs to be addressed. So if you could add that, if you have conditions of approval.
That needs to be added?
Yes, sir. And for the most part, I think they have successfully provided what we need, the approval of drainage by Richard Johnson. We're still waiting on an LID narrative for that. And...
And you're good on the lighting?
Yes. The lighting, actually, they've submitted and we have required them that it's no taller than 10 feet. They said that that was the case. And on the sidewalk at this location, they are asking for an exemption on the sidewalk on the Edwards side. And the reason is they don't want to tie because there's no existing sidewalk in that neighborhood.
Could you put your state, your condition number seven?
Oh, the...
Fence.
Fence, yes.
That there needs to be a fence on what's on...
Fence erected on their applicant's property.
On the west side of the property. I have a question. Is there a crosswalk at that intersection? I know that there's a sidewalk on the east side in front of Edwards, and there's a sidewalk on the south side of Edwards, on both sides of Edwards. But to connect, there's not a crosswalk from across Greeno. I don't know if that has anything to do with our jurisdiction.
I think you have to go probably down in order to make a turn.
Yes, sir.
I'm Robert Cummings. I'm with HMR. I'm penchanting for Doug Bailey. He's actually the project manager on this. Yes, there is a crosswalk across Edwards. There's not one across 98, to answer your question. And forgive me, I've got a bit of a frog in my throat tonight.
Between the Myrick Agency and the proposed development, is that where you're saying there's a crosswalk?
You can go north to south across Edwards, right there, in a painted crosswalk.
Okay.
Holly, if you'll look at the area.
Mm-hmm.
This is not a public hearing, but does anybody wish to speak to this from the public? If not, commissioners? I'm ready. I mean, I kind of like the idea of there being a sidewalk there. I just think at some point...
Well, isn't there a sidewalk? There is one when you get to Gayford, right?
Well, Greeno's got one. And then...
I just can't remember.
You know, I mean, this is...
Problem you got on Edwards is you don't have, I mean, all of that immediate area's already developed.
It's just all residential. That's the only reason we're talking about sidewalk. That's the, behind there is all... This is the same as the case for the property, the Thomas Hospital Foundation property on Atkinson's. It's a similar situation.
Right. I just know that ultimately, the city wants to have sidewalks there.
There's never been sidewalks.
And it's just so much easier to have them doing there and then connect to them, you know, rather than come back and try to get easements and right of ways. I mean, we used to not have sidewalks down...
We could require it.
We used to not have them down, I mean, if you look, you know, we used to not have them down Fairhope Avenue. We didn't have them down anywhere on Morphe. You know, just, you know, the city gets grants and adds them. It's just so much easier when you've got them out there to, you know, connect the dots rather than start from scratch. I mean, it's...
That's fine. But you want to add that as a condition.
I like the sidewalks being there. I mean, you're not talking about much money at all. And then people can get at least on their property or next door can then get out to Greeno. And then eventually, next door, maybe they want to perk their place up and they tie into it and so forth.
Okay. You could add that.
We ready for a motion?
Certainly.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion, case SR 18.03, Century Bank, applicant that we approve, subject to staff recommendations, 1 through 6, and the addition of 7, a fence erected along the west property line, which is strictly on the applicant's property, as required by staff and, as approved by staff, and number 8, construction of a sidewalk on Edwards Avenue.
All right. So that's actually number 5 is a sidewalk exemption.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not getting them on the exemption.
Right. But you said staff recommendation on what you said.
So you want to replace number 5?
Little conflict. Eliminate number 5, please.
Eliminate the exemption and add the sidewalk requirement.
All right. Have a motion to approve a staff recommendation minus the sidewalk exemption and adding a fence. And Charles Johnson, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Last item on the agenda, UR 1802, AT&amp;T, 115211, utility review to add 6,780 linear feet of fiber optic cable through Rock Creek Phases 1 and 2 and Sandy Ford Phases 1, 2, and 3.
And, Mr. Chairman, what we wish to illuminate for both the public and the planning commission is that this is, the total is 6,780 feet. That's, these are not continuous directional bores. This will be a series of basically bores underneath the street. So they will, the contractor working for AT&amp;T will set up in the utility easement on one side of the street, dig their initial pilot hole, make their bore, which pops up on the other side of the street. And there were 60, more than 60 pages of drawings reflecting each of those locations that would have been too cumbersome to try to reflect in this agenda here. So what I'd like to do, Chairman, is get right to the staff recommendation for approval and illuminate a couple of things for you in that approval. Conditions of approval, items 1 and 2 are our standard recommendations. What we want to illuminate for everyone and the public as well is items 3, 4, and 5. AT&amp;T has already reached out.
We don't have those by number in our, oh, yes, we do. Never mind. Excuse me.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. I'm the weak link here. Excuse me. I'm still worried about sidewalks. Go ahead. That's more bad.
So Chairman and Commissioners, items 3, 4, and 5 in the staff recommendation, just want to give you a very brief narrative. AT&amp;T reached out to the homeowners associations of both Sandy Ford and Rock Creek. In your packet, there is a supporting letter from AT&amp;T sent to each of their HOAs, where they informed them of the pending project, gave them points of contact to call with complaints or concerns, because this is an AT&amp;T project with a contractor working on behalf of AT&amp;T. In addition, proposed utility construction following a standard, following standard construction procedure is that they will, the contractor will mark areas to receive excavation with white paint. And they had included in their supporting letter a phasing program, which is an internal requirement necessary for city staff. And what that phasing requirement allows is to make certain that the requests for locates are coming in at a gradual rate, not all at once for the entire development. That's item number 4. Number 5 is also, as a condition of approval, requesting the applicant and applicant's contractor follow the right-of-way installation permitting and work procedures, which is a document prepared by the building official, a supporting document here. We want to make certain that we have this preserved in the record, that staff vetted this with AT&amp;T and their contractor, because a lot of excavation is going to occur in these two subdivisions. And so preserved within here, you have the points of contact with the contractor. In addition, AT&amp;T will put up door hangers to inform the citizens. And they will also put up, they will also put up some temporary signage, not on the right-of-way in some of the common areas, to alert the citizens what is coming in their area. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we recommend approval with the five conditions.
Good job. Thank you, Buford. Great job on that. I always look down to Richard whenever we have these 115211s.
There's nothing we can do about keeping them from putting it in there. What, on item 2, Buford, you talked about, I know it may be skipped over, mechanical and locator equipment shall be painted muntzle green. What is that about?
Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Peterson, that is a standard, a standard requirement we put in each of these to make certain that those items, if they do have to be painted, that they're that dark muntzle green. And that's been a standardized requirement for the utility, for the utility reviews.
It kind of matches the color of the muntzle green that you put around them. So that'll stand out.
So it's not as ugly.
I mean, is this permanent stuff you're talking about? So it's like the pedestals that they put up?
That type of thing, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So if you had, if you had, so that way, for example, it wouldn't be bright yellow, et cetera. For example, some of our utility poles are muntzle green.
Yeah. Okay. I was thinking it was during construction that this contractor was going to be responsible for having green equipment out there working on the thing.
No, sir. No, sir. I don't think ditch witch is going to be...
It's like, Buford, did I ever excuse myself once?
That's right. I don't think ditch witch is going to be... Yeah. I don't think we'll have a ditch witch muntzle green voiding machine anytime soon.
It is Fairhope.
Thank you.
We can only do them, we can do them pink during breast awareness. Breast cancer Awareness Month. And other than that, they got to be green. All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion...
Please let me...
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, case number UR 18... Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, case number UR 18.02, the installation of fiber optic cable in Rock Creek and Sandy Ford subdivisions be approved with the conditions as noted in the review.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, under old slash new business, work session, planning and community engagement meeting, follow-up.
Thank you, Chairman. This is, again, a follow-up to the meeting we had. We're going to be rolling out some of the proposed changes before the, before the meeting and like for y'all to attend, have a work session, have a discussion about those with the planning commission, so, so we're hoping to do that at the next June 4th meeting and so get some feedback on that and then we hope to have it on the agenda to adopt as part of the subregs.
So here instead of the library?
Yes, here, here.
I thought y'all did a great job on that meeting, by the way, and there was very good turnout for the development community, but I thought everybody did a knockout job from the staff presenting that and those are such important meetings, so thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. That's all we have.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.